So why don't we go ahead and get started since it's so a minute past the hour. So let's see. All right, so good morning, everybody, and welcome to the May 1st, 2021. City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Special Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'll take public comments. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the agenda. Posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not on the listed agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policies refer items to staff for retention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
I don't see any hands at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll move to study session, item 4A. But before we do, I just wanted to make a couple of remarks, and then we'll be hearing from Jeff Maltby, who will give an introduction to the day and followed by Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director, who will talk about the operating budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to kind of recall our strategic planning goals that we set forth at the beginning of the year. When we received the community survey, we recognized that the priorities of the community are very much aligned with our strategic goals. We have an opportunity at this moment in time, given the fact that the tax revenues were not as low as expected to restore programs that had been in place during the pre-pandemic, prior to, you know, pre-pandemic levels. And again, those were all in alignment with the strategic goals. We do have a lot to cover today, and we have various scheduling issues. So my intent is to see if we could adjourn the meeting by 12:30 as close to that as possible. So if we can keep the discussion at a high level, and Jeff will talk about the fact that, you know, this budget is, you know, these items are always going to come back to us for future review. And if I could just respectfully request that everybody limit their questions on each item to two, that would be really helpful. As there's five of us, and I trust that among all of us will likely have many of the same questions, so if we could make sure that we adhere to that norm, that would be, that would be wonderful. All right, so with that, Jeff, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, City Council and public. Thank you for joining us this morning for our second budget study session for our fiscal year 2021 through 2023, two-year budget. Our process to develop the budget really starts with the City Council and the community at our strategic planning session that we hold in January every year. That's where we really check in with the City Council to understand, you know, what those, what the priorities are for the city in the coming year, what goals and objectives we're looking to achieve. The staff goes back and works on that, comes up with a work program that's submitted to the City Council that gets approved, and then we begin designing those elements into the new budget year. And that's the work that we've been doing between the strategic plan session in January and today's meeting. And this is really our final check-in with the City Council to make sure that we're on the right track with the development of the budget, that we've captured those priorities, both in services as well as the projects that are being proposed, and we have an opportunity to discuss that with you today. We're not adopting a budget today. After today, the finance staff takes the final direction of the City Council and prepares the final document, which takes some time that we anticipate will be on your second meeting in June for your consideration of adoption. So, you know, if every, if we don't get to every question today, you still have plenty of time to circle back around with Rebecca and I to get additional information or individual questions answered, so that we, because we do have a lot of ground to cover today. Rebecca is going to be up next. She's going to really focus on sort of the big picture in terms of revenue and expenditures, and then walk you through our proposed changes for you in the operating budget. And if I could categorize them just in general, I would say they're really mostly restorative. They fall into two categories, restorative from the cuts that we needed to make last year in response to the economic downturn that was related to COVID-19, and to reflect, you know, new desires and initiatives that have been identified with the City Council. Our operating budget and our capital budget are not the end-all and be-all of what we're going to be doing over the next two years. The City Council has a number of large-scale planning initiatives underway. The East Side Visioning Plan, the Housing Element General Plan Update, we're going to be kicking off a downtown study a few months from now. And those things are going to provide a lot of new information in terms of potential changes to, and new projects that we might consider that are, that you're going to consider standalone. And, and they will, those actions will, by default, amend this new budget that you're going, and you'll take lots of actions like that over the two-year lifespan of this particular budget. In addition, you have a lot of large-scale private development projects that have been proposed in town, and as those things work through their processes, through the Planning Commission, and the ones that need to come to the City Council, come to the City Council. Some of them will require development agreements that the City Council will be involved in creating and crafting, which will generate new sources of revenue, new, new capital projects that are agreed to by developers in support of their development and moving into the city. So all those things will still happen sort of independently of the budget. And then we have, you know, the potential to receive a fairly large sum from the federal government as part of their COVID relief package. We haven't received that money yet. We don't know if it's going to come in one year or two years. We don't know all the sort of use parameters that are being placed on it. Those rules are still being promulgated by the federal government. We're watching that closely. So we haven't included that in the budget because there was just too much uncertainty for us to predict as we were working through it, but we know that it's out there. We're monitoring it. When that comes back, we'll be bringing that to you for a discussion on how you want to incorporate that funding into your budget, which, you know, is either in its final development stages or has already been adopted, depending on when that all comes to fruition. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rebecca Mendenhall, so she can start to walk us through the budget. Thank you all. Look forward to hearing your feedback today.
Good morning, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. I think I have control of the screen now. So as Jeff and the mayor stated, the operating budget is basically a plan for the future, but it is a living document. So council can continue to make adjustments to the budget during the fiscal year as needs arise. So as part of our budget process, each department was provided a base budget that included estimated increases in personnel costs, increases related to existing professional services contracts, and inflationary increases for operating expenditures. After reviewing their budgets and possible funding requests, each department then met with me and the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the financial services manager to review their requests. As we discussed on Monday, given the uncertain financial situation with the COVID-19 pandemic last year, the City Council made a number of difficult decisions, including the elimination of seven full-time positions. With the rollout of the vaccines and the reopening of the economy, staff is recommending that some of these reductions be restored. There are also some new programs and/or funding requests that have been included. More detail on each of these requests can be found on page 19 in your packet. However, I'll summarize the requests by department and fiscal year. So in the city manager's budget, the proposed changes include funding for contract emergency services in the amount of $200,000, of which the cost will be split with Redwood City, so that the total cost to the general fund will be $100,000. This is funding to restore services that were eliminated when we cut the emergency services district coordinator funding. The reinstatement of funding for professional video production in the second year totaling $15,000. The reinstatement of the summer intern position, beginning in June of 2022. The reinstatement of funding for conferences, meetings, dues, and memberships in the second year totaling $10,000. And the restoration of the Citizens Academy in the second year, including the addition of a special sheriff's office academy. In the city clerk's budget, there's restoration of funding for the document scanning project in the second year totaling $50,000, $55,000, and restoration of funding and of training in both years. In the Administrative Services Department, our first request is to outsource our business registration function, which will also eliminate a vacant account tech position, and over time will generate a small amount of savings. As we discussed on Monday, this is just one of the services that my department provides, and as such, we don't have a robust compliance program or an easy way to confirm all the businesses in the city have registered. Outsourcing this service will eventually lead to revenue growth. As a consultant, will help manage compliance and can also leverage and coordinate information from the state sales and franchise tax databases. The rest of our requests include restoring funding that was cut in the last fiscal year, including restoring conference and meeting budgets to allow for travel in the second fiscal year, restoring training and professional development, office supplies, capital outlay or furniture budgets, and lastly, professional services funding. In the Community Development Department, the first two requests have no impact on the fund balance. Both of these requests are for additional professional services funding that will be directly offset by fees paid by the developers. It's difficult to estimate the timing of these, so staff has included enough funding to help cover any anticipated large submittals in both years of the two-year budget. The other two requests include the reinstatement of the senior planner and the senior administrative clerk in the Advanced Planning Division, beginning in January 2022, which will help support and manage the long-range planning initiatives and projects. In addition, there's an upgrade of the Building Inspector II to a Senior Inspector position, which will assist the building official with the coordination of the larger development projects. In the Parks and Recreation Department, the proposed changes include the reinstatement of the senior administrative clerk and the senior facility attendant. Reinstating these positions will relieve the large burden placed on the other staff as these two positions support our summer camp and other programs that are planned to resume very soon. Additional funding for public art totaling $30,000 has been requested in the second year, and the restoration of the Adult Center Trips and Tours Program, which will be offset by program revenue once they can resume travel, and finally, the restoration of the administrative program budgets in the second year. In the Fire and Emergency Services Budget, there's a request in the second year for additional funding to support a more robust recruitment and a fire explorer program. And in the Public Works Department, there is a request to reinstate the eliminated civil engineering assistant position, which will help support the number of capital projects will be discussed later this morning. In addition, there's an increase in funding requested for the fuel mitigation program or the reduction of the vegetation in parks, which will help reduce the risk of wildfires, and funding for professional services to help with the outreach and/or change management efforts. This would include assistance with preparation of documents, media postings, website content, and workshops. So in total, the staff recommended additions to the base budget are $962,700 in fiscal year 2122 and $1.4 million in fiscal year 2223. So if the recommendations are approved, including the reinstatement of the five positions and the outsourcing of the business registration, it will result in a proposed full-time staff of 81 employees. So as we talked about on Monday night, the budget includes 18 different funds that are grouped into five different components. I will now present the assumptions and the proposed budget for the operating funds. And in the second part of the study session today, as Jeff mentioned, we'll talk about the capital. So the first step is the general fund. And since this is the primary operating fund of the city, I'll spend a little bit more time on this one. The total general fund revenue is budgeted at $46 million next fiscal year, increasing to $49.6 million in fiscal year 2223. The primary reason for these increases are the assumptions surrounding the return to normal activities following the COVID-19 pandemic. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce this week, the U.S. economy grew 1.6% in the first quarter of this year, or 6.4% on an annual basis, showing that the economy is well on its way to returning to pre-pandemic levels. So with that, I'll go through each of the revenue categories quickly. Business registration is budgeted to increase by 14% from the fiscal year 21 budget, but this is only a 4% increase over the projections, which is in line with the increase specified in the city's MUNICO. Charges for current services is budgeted to increase by 42% in the first year, primarily due to the return of recreation programming and the timing of plan check services related to development. As mentioned earlier, the budget assumes fees from large-scale development projects, and since these are pass-through payments, there's a corresponding increase to expense. Fines and forfeitures is budgeted flat based on historical trends. From other agencies, it's also budgeted flat as its revenue is very hard to predict. License and permit revenue is projected to increase 6.5% in the first year and around 3% in the second year. Similar to plan check services, this revenue can fluctuate based on the timing and the scope of development projects, or how much people want to work on their own homes, as we've seen this past year. Other revenues include cost reimbursements from other agencies, and this includes revenue for fiscal services that my department provides to the City-County Association of Governments and commute.org. This category also includes donations and sponsorships, which are expected to increase over the next two years with the return of the special events that were previously hosted or managed by the Chamber of Commerce. Other taxes are franchise fees and are budgeted flat based on historical trends. Property tax is based on the assessment rolls and information provided by our third-party consultants. As we discussed on Monday night, in May of 2020, the California Court of Appeals changed the calculations for how the former redevelopment area tax increment monies are distributed to the cities. So this decrease is offset by the general growth of the assessed rule. Although there are a lot of large developments underway on the east side, the timing of when these will be added to our assessed rule is unknown, and therefore, we add them to the budget once the revenue has been realized. Sales tax is also budgeted based on information from our third-party consultants and includes the economic recovery following the pandemic. The governor's announcement on April 6th indicated that the state will be able to reopen its economy, which will further support greater consumer spending. Transient occupancy tax is projected to increase 1.3 million from last year's budget. It's anticipated that as the state reopens, there'll be a pent-up demand for travel, which will return us to normal occupancy levels again in the second year of the budget, and we'll be watching that closely over the next few quarters. Other uses of money and property reflect increases of 4% in the first year and 5% in the second, including lease income and digital billboard revenue. Camp project revenue is based on the terms of the development agreement. And finally, vehicle and lieu revenue is reflecting the decreases discussed on Monday night with the lack of funding to backfill from the county. So this bar chart is a summary of the revenues for both years as a percentage of total. As you can see, property and sales taxes account for approximately 58% of our total general fund revenues of $26.6 million. So the total fund, general fund, the total general fund expenditure amount is budgeted at $49 million, or an increase of 8% in the first year and 4.7% in the second year. This increase in expense includes the reinstatement of positions that we just discussed and other expenditures, as well as any other department requests. Salaries and benefits have been funded based on MOU provisions with each of our labor groups and assumptions for pension and medical increases. Legacy obligations are those pension obligations that remain following the outsourcing of our police and fire departments, and these increases are based on the CalPERS projections in their amortization schedules. Operating expenses include all of the reinstatements discussed, as well as increases in our public safety contracts. And capital outlay is increased for the, again, the restoration of certain line items with an inflationary factor. So this chart represents the summary of the recommended budget by department. Public safety is 45% of our total budget, or approximately $22 million, so less than the total of our two largest revenue sources, property and sales tax. And while property and sales tax are not specifically set aside for public safety costs, we do use this to kind of manage our total costs as a, and we use this as a benchmark. So with that, this table here summarizes the recommended revenues and expenditures for the next two years, and also represents a balanced budget in both, as can be seen in the line entitled "Total Change in Operating Funds" in the middle of your screen. As done in prior years, our recommendations to transfer capital reserves to the Capital Projects Fund 25 to fund improvements in the city's infrastructure. So moving on to the wastewater or the sewer fund budget, this is used to account for sewage treatment, transmission, major replacements, and improvements to our sewer system. Revenues received into this fund can only be used for sewer-related projects, and those revenues have been budgeted at $21 million, which reflects the 4.5% sewer rate adjustment that was approved by the City Council at the May 29th, 2019 meeting. Salaries and benefits, just like the general fund, have been budgeted based on MOU provisions and medical and pension increases. The Silicon Valley Clean Water, or SVCW, plant operations are budgeted based on the long-range financial plan that was approved by the SVCW Board this past January. Other operating expenses include utilities, office supplies, and are projected to increase slightly over the next two years. Bond payments are directly tied to the debt service payments and bond issuances approved by the SVCW Board and our City Council. And finally, capital projects related to the sewer fund will be discussed later this morning by our Public Works Director. Other revenue funds are used to account for revenue sources for which expenditures are restricted by law or administrative action. So these funds include the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, the library tenant, and police grants. The majority of the revenue in this category comes from our NPDS fees collected through the county. And other sources are the police grant funding that we receive from the state, as well as rents paid by the tenants on the second floor of the library. Operating expenses include utilities, program supplies, some professional services, permits related to stormwater, and equipment maintenance. And as will be discussed later this morning, the Library Tenant Fund also has a capital project fund for a generator. And as will be discussed later this morning, the library tenant fund also has a capital project fund for a generator. Our last category is other program funds, and those are used to account for special activities and services performed by a designated department. For the city, these are internal service funds, which cover our insurance and post-employment benefits. Expenses include our insurance premiums and the annual required payments toward our other post-employment benefits. Revenues are just internal transfers from our other funds. So also included in our proposed budget document is a snapshot of our general fund reserve balances. As shown here, the city has healthy reserves as a percentage of our general fund operating expenses. There are four main categories of reserves. There's committed, which can only be changed by council action. And for the city, those include our economic uncertainty reserves and our strategic property acquisition reserves. The council has requested that the economic uncertainty reserve have a minimum of twelve percent with a goal of increasing to seventy, or to twenty percent. And we've been maintaining it at about seventeen percent. The strategic property acquisition reserve was used in the past to purchase the property for the landmark site that now has the residence in. The assigned fund balance is determined at the end of every fiscal year, depending on prior year fund savings. So in the past, this fund balance has included reserves for the unfund liabilities that we've used to pay down our CalPERS obligations, which have reduced our expenditures on a go-forward basis. And now they include a facility infrastructure reserve that we use to pay for our infrastructure improvements. Unaside balances are immediately available for use, and non-spendable or restricted balances are amounts restricted by external parties or contracts. So that is a brief overview of the operating budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that our department directors and division heads are also on this call, so if there's specific questions related to any of their requests, they can answer those as well.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate that. So now we'll move to council questions. And again, if you can limit your questions to two, inclusive of follow-up questions, that would be great. Then we'll move to public comment, and then we'll come back again to council comment or discussion. All right. Council member Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Rebecca, I had one question for you and one for Chief Pucci. Can you, so I saw the, I guess the couple original slides have us with revenues in the forty-nine million in twenty-twenty-three, and I think about fifty-one million in outlays and expenses. So can you explain how you get the balanced budget around that? And just kind of, you, I just want to understand from the out-years, sort of looking past these two-year budget, if you have any concerns around revenue continuing to rise for us.
Let me go back to this.
Projects kind of going away, some of the projects being finished, some of the larger projects.
So while our expenditures may seem larger than our revenues, we also have, and that's why I pulled up the screen, there are allocations and transfers that come in from the other funds into the general fund. So the general fund has, does work for like the sewer fund and the gas tax fund and the housing funds. So based on our comprehensive overhead allocation study that was done a few years ago, the general fund receives allocations back, and that's what makes up the difference. So you can see here in the, yeah, on this line right here, I don't know if you can see my mouse moving, but.
I can't see it yet.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then I don't want to get over my question, but can you just, you know, we've got projects coming in and things are going to change, and we're sort of increasing some costs. Do you feel like looking sort of beyond the twenty-twenty-three timeframe that our revenue growth can continue? Is that, I mean, assume that property taxes will continue to increase with these new projects coming in line to kind of meet sort of the demands that we have from services?
Yes, at the same time, we do a long-term, long-range projection, which will be part of your, or what we'll bring forward when they bring the budget forward for adoption. But yes, we look at that and we anticipate that some of, as I mentioned earlier, some of these large developments on the east side, those, once they're done, those assessed, those properties will hit our assessed role, which will increase the property tax.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'll be super quick, Madam Mayor, just, I have one kind of, I just want to understand from Chief Pucci, this explorer program, because I have, I know he talked about it last time. I just, I have a little concern of, you know, we're basically contract, we're, we are, you know, Redwood City is providing a service to us, and then I have a little concern with now us spending more money when I feel we have a service level agreement, they should be just providing us the services and why we would be paying for their training. It seems sort of a little bit odd to me. So I just wanted to hear from the chief on that.
Good morning, Mayor Palmer Lohan.
Chuck, I didn't realize it was you, not Dave.
And council members. So the explorer program is targeting high school age kids. Currently, we have a junior fire academy targeting sixth, seventh and eighth graders that we advertise in both Redwood City and San Carlos Park and Rec. And we host that every summer for two weeks. And then we're missing the high school part for programs for youth. And then we have essentially a college program, what we call our cadet program, for students that have completed a fire science program at a junior college. So we're just looking to bridge that gap for high school age kids through Sequoia High School in partnership with the Health Career Academies. We've already have staff here at the fire department that is going to take that program on. We've established a post number, and we'll be looking to reach out to the high school to bring some students on board. The funding would be to pay our employees the overtime to run that program on the weekends with the kids that are involved in that program. So I see it as a benefit for San Carlos, because we do have quite a few San Carlos residents that attend Sequoia High School and could be a part of that program.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rec. All right. I don't see any other hands raised from councils. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also happy to, you can go first if you want. I have a quick question for Al. Is Al on the line here? Well, I'll start with my question. Okay, great. Good morning, Al. So I'm, I personally am excited to beef up your staff. And I'm glad that there's the request for more advanced planning staff, because I know that we just have so much change coming to San Carlos, and we're trying to be proactive and wrap our hands around it and engage the community. So I'm happy with that. I just, I wanted to check in with you and make sure that you feel like this is enough staff, because I, as Jeff mentioned in his opening comments, we do have so many different things going on with the east side and the downtown. And so I want to make sure that advanced planning, you feel like that's enough. And then also, do you, do you feel at all that you might need staff on the planning side? Because I'm a little concerned about the response times, and Andrea did a good job answering that in our last meeting. But I want to make sure that we can continue with our high-quality level of service on both ends of the advanced planning and then the regular planning. So just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. On the advanced planning side, yes, if we can get the senior planner in the administrative staff, I think that'll cover the advanced planning side. And the one good thing about adding a senior planner on the advanced planning side, with advanced planning, there's kind of ebbs and flows, things kind of go up and down. And what we anticipate is that we would get a generalist planner that can help on the advanced planning side, but can also switch over. And at the senior level, you have someone who's pretty experienced. So they could potentially take on other types of projects on the current planning side as well. So we see that, that it could benefit kind of both sides of the aisle, as it were. We did eliminate four positions in this last budget cut there. And I am a little bit concerned on the current planning side. But I think that we could probably take a wait-and-see approach on that. We are anticipating a good number of project management increases in terms of the number of projects that will be coming forward as a result, of course, of the east side development projects, but also housing. We anticipate more housing developments coming through, and many of these will be highly complex projects as well. And we've been using consultants for those. And so that kind of comes under the direction of the principal planner with Andrea Marticich. And she's already, you know, managing the division itself. So I think that you're right to be concerned about it. But I would say that if we could take a wait-and-see approach for maybe a year and see how this model plays out with the senior planner and admin staff. And both of those positions, by the way, are really, really important to the success of the technical work, because the admin person is supportive of all that work and all the public meetings and the staff reports and things. So, so does that make sense? If we could kind of wait a little bit and see about twelve months and kind of see how it goes on the current planning side? But there may be a need there, yes.
Okay, no, thank you, Al. I appreciate that. My comment would be, don't be shy to ask for staff, because I, this, I mean, change has found San Carlos, right? We haven't gone up there looking for it, but it has found us. And I think that we just need to stay on top of things, which I know you're handling well. So thank you for that. And my second question is for fire. I saw that an additional seventy-five thousand dollars has been asked for funding for vegetation reduction in the parks, and I know we've already budgeted a hundred thousand. So I'm just wondering what the extra seventy-five is intended for.
Good morning again. Chuck Lacks, acting deputy fire chief. So we've identified additional city parcels, some smaller parcels, as well as the maintenance of the existing parks, Big Canyon Parking, Parker, Willow Park. So that additional money is going to allow us to touch all of those parcels every year on a maintenance budget, as well as a little bit of extra funding for us to bring in hand crews so that we could keep chipping away at improving the protection to the residents that surround those parks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. If we can go to Councilmember Dugan and then Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, great. Thank you. This might be a question for Rebecca. I just noticed we're hiring a consultant to see if there's additional businesses in town that, that I guess aren't registered or something. I just had a question, you know, are we, is that a particular problem? You know, is there, do we have any problems in town regarding unregistered businesses or activities that have concerned us? Is this a, just kind of the city being proactive to, you know, kind of track down people who might not be paying fees? Or, you know, I'm just kind of wondering if this is an actual problem we're trying to solve, or just the case that, you know, we can hire a consultant and get a return on that investment, and so we're pursuing that as a city?
So currently, the way that we handle issues is basically a complaint basis. So if somebody sees a new business and they don't know if they're registered, they send a question in. So we don't have the ability or the resources to do all of the cross-checks between sales tax, property tax and franchise fees. So we can, we can, I don't want to say catch them, but so we can make sure that every business that's registered or that's licensed to do business in the city is registered with the city.
Okay.
This is more of a proactive measure to try to just make sure that we have everyone in compliance.
And is that, I mean, do we then, you know, are there services that we then offer to registered businesses? Or it's really about making sure the list is complete, so no one's getting away without paying the permit fee or whatever?
So the business registration is part of our municipal code, so it's just to make sure that they have compliance. But once we have them in our system, then we also have them registered, and we could utilize those lists possibly with community development to do outreach.
Okay, okay, fair enough. I'm just not a huge fan of hiring consultants to track down, you know, maybe someone doing consulting or something out of an apartment. Doesn't seem like a great, you know, activity for our city to be doing, but fair enough.
If I can just add a little bit more too. The position that we have that's doing this, this function is also very hard to maintain. So we've had a lot of turnover in this position, because it's an account tech position. But it's essentially more of a, it's not so much of an accounting function as it is more of a clerical function. So we've had a really difficult time with recruitment and retention in this position. So that's part of the other reason that we're looking to outsource it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Sarah's question for Al as far as taking a wait-and-see approach. Al, I assume that, or maybe it's a question for Rebecca and Jeff, that if that need arises a year from now, and we do need the more staff, we've got, we are well-budgeted or well-positioned to be able to budget for it. Is that correct?
So if we're looking in the, in the second year, yes, I believe we'll be, we'll be okay to meet. But again, we continue, the budget is a living document. So as more information comes in, and next year we'll be doing a check-in, which is our mid-cycle review. So it gives the staff an opportunity to request additional funding resources. And it also gives us a check-in to see how good our assumptions have been in the second year.
All right. Yeah, the other thing that. I just wanted to make sure.
The other thing to keep in mind too is that, you know, if, because when it comes to planning and building right, anything's possible. We don't, we don't always know, you know, new projects can come out of left field or interest rates can become so attractive that homeowners in our town, you know, begin to do a lot of refinances to do work and upgrades on their homes. So there are things that can cause a big influx of projects that were unanticipated on our end. But the good news is that those projects come with revenue. So if the workload grows, so does the revenue associated with those, getting that project work done for those projects. So we, you know, even, even though the budget is predicting that we would have that additional funding available in the second year, if a big wave hit us, you know, six months from now, and we were still in the first year of the budget, likely we would also be anticipating an increase in revenue associated with that increase in workload. So we could come back to at that time too and say, hey, you know, unprecedented number of applications came in, we need more help. Can you, can you consider authorizing additional staff?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. So at this point, let's move to public comment. Crystal, are there any members of the public that wish to make a comment on this item?
I do not see any hands now.
All right. So let's go ahead.
Actually, one, sorry, one hand just shot up. We may take that. Sonia Elks, if you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Sonia.
Thank you so much for all that information on the budget. And I just wanted to underscore, I appreciate the need to get San Carlos students particularly interested in firefighting and local law patrol, kind of internal pushing of our own education. I also really want to underscore the need to have in public works, people who are, you know, bicyclists, micro mobility users, public transportation users, kind of an on-the-ground perspective on how that fits into our city. And if there's a new position in the sheriff's department, which I think would be a fantastic, especially as downtown Laurel grows, as our economic recovery happens, I think there's going to be tremendous, tremendous interest in downtown, and our economy will grow from that. You know, that there will need to be safety patrols downtown. The safe routes to school is a big issue. If we can get our youth interested in things like safety and, you know, knowledgeable about the streets and somebody who works well with safe routes to school and all of those things, I would, I think it would be. all of those things, I would, I think it would be a huge benefit to, as far as investment in the future. Decreasing the need to pay money for things that we could have nipped in the bud a lot earlier. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sonia. I appreciate that. All right, if we could now move to council comments and discussion is. Vice Mayor McDowell.
I just wanted to say I'm very pleased to be restoring things that we had to cut last year, which was really difficult. So I appreciate all the work that went into the budget. I also wanted to address, there is a note in the youth center programming that we have the option to increase fees at the youth center to kind of offset costs and I just I just personally wanted to note my opposition to fees at the youth center. I'd like to keep that free for the youth in our community, especially after the year that we've had. So I'm glad that the proposal was not to institute offsetting fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank all the everyone for the work on the on putting this together. I think it was pleased where things are. And I just wanted to appreciate the Vice Mayor's question around the development side and the need for staffing and certainly would be supportive even a six month check in on this because as things move, I think it'd be worthwhile to just keep an eye on this because we don't want to get it out of control as development starts to crank up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. All right, and I'll echo my support of doing a six month check in on that. Just again, as the pandemic is we emerge from that, right, it could be accelerated given the stimulus package coming from the federal government. So I think that would be wise to make sure that we stay ahead of service requirements for the city. I also want to just acknowledge the, you know, tremendous amount of work that went into this budgeting and not only you know, this phase of it, but actually when we had to, you know, take a look at a conservative budgeting approach, I think it while there was difficult decisions that we had to make last year. It was prudent and it set us up for a better discussion at this point in time. I'm pleased to see, you know, the commitment and restoration of program and staffing levels and it's nice to see other things that are starting to emerge like the art program. And getting back to a little bit of normalcy. The recruitment and explorer program, I think is, I'm very supportive of that, just given the fact that we do see a decline in people moving into these types of professions and that timing around high school, I think is really critical for workforce development and inspiring people to pursue these very important careers that the community values. I'm pleased to see the fuel reduction program. I understood from our last presentation in the report out that some of the train was more challenging than had initially been anticipated. So I think it's wise for us to make sure that we can take care of that, those challenges in a meaningful way. The outreach and change management with the amount of, you know, potential development as well as the investment in infrastructure in our community and knowing how our community wants to be connected with on some of these things and part of the process. I think that's a really important way to spend our funds and make sure that we keep that open dialogue. So with that, I see Councilmember Collins has raised his hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing I just wanted to add was I was very pleased to see the addition of a sheriff's academy. I think with everything that's happened in the last year, the more people get to know how the sheriff's department works, how law enforcement works and understand the people involved and what it takes to provide public safety in our town. I think that's just a tremendous idea and I look forward to maybe even participating in it myself. I think I may sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Perhaps we'll see you someday on the downtown volunteer patrol. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just the high level observation that nice work, city staff across the board as far as navigating through a very, very challenging year. And I'll echo my colleagues' comments on how good it is to see important programs and staffing restored and just kind of the optimism that I see and feel through this budget as we come out of this trying time and just, I just thank everyone for staying the course and responsibly seeing San Carlos through. You know, historically challenging times. So nice work and I looking forward to seeing how these new programs and the restoration of everything comes out over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. All right, so I think with that, we can move to the next part of our agenda, which is the discussion of recommended capital improvement program for the fiscal years 2021 and 2022 through 2023. And for that, I understand we have Rebecca Mendenhall as well as Stephen Machida, Public Works Director, who will be presenting this. Jeff, will you be making any opening remarks on this one as well?
Yes, I will, probably even in briefer than the original. Well, thank you very much for the feedback on the operating budget. Really appreciate that. That was a great discussion and we'll begin work on the the final document for your consideration in June. And now we're going to move into our capital budget and that tends to, tends to take a little more time for councils to go through the capital budget than the operating budget, just because there's a lot of there's a lot of different projects, obviously, in the capital budget. There's a lot of complexity in terms of things that are tied to specific funding sources and grant funded projects and all those types of things. So you know, we'll really dig in here and and make sure that you feel comfortable and have all the information and answers you need. Our primary presenters today are going to be Rebecca, Stephen, Chuck Lacks, Amy Newby, and I think Al might have a couple of projects in here as well. So we'll do our best to kind of juggle around questions to get you the most complete answers we can. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I see Councilmember Rack's hand is up, so I want to call on him briefly before Rebecca begins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, since I live within 500 feet of Burton Park, so just any of those discussions around Burton Park, I'll need to recuse myself from. I know there's some projects slated for that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. And I think, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, much of those will come at the end of the discussion today. Is that correct?
That's correct. We tried to move those to the end so that they're all lumped together.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have the same issue with Fire Station 16. I'll have to recuse myself from that conversation.
All right, thank you, Vice, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, Rebecca, welcome back.
Thank you. Well, since you've heard a lot from me today, I'm going to quickly go over the numbers and then I'll pass the presentation over to Stephen Machida, our Public Works Director. So he can talk more about the projects. So, thank you, Crystal. So over the past five years, we've invested $88 million back into our capital infrastructure. So this includes 23 million in sewer capacity system rehabilitation spending, 11 million in our street resurfacing and sidewalk projects. And several other large projects, including the Highlands Park project in fiscal year 18, the youth center remodel in 19, our park restroom remodel, San Carlos Avenue pedestrian improvements, upgrades of the sports field lighting, the Cherry Street Low Market Raid and the 817 Walnut Housing Projects. And in this current year, we have the Cedar Arroyo improvements, Highlands Park, traffic calming improvements, Fire Station 16, and additional funding for 817 Walnut. All of these things, Stephen and the rest of the department directors will go into more detail on. Next slide please, thank you. So we're proposing to spend another 87 million over the next five years, including 33 million in sewer rehab, 25 million in street resurfacing projects. And although you're seeing the majority of the funding in the first year, some of these projects may span multiple years and therefore the funding will just roll forward accordingly. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Stephen so he can give more detail on all of the, all of the projects being proposed.
Good morning, City Councilmembers, Madam Mayor. Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. It's a wonderful day today. As, as indicated, I will be presenting the capital improvement program. And as Jeff alluded to, Amy Newby, Al Savae, Lisa Porres, Adam Urinson, Chuck Lacks, Grace Lee and Lou Durand will all be available to answer any questions as it relates to CIP projects. We also had indicated that because Councilmember Rack needed to recuse himself on projects related to Burton Park and the youth center, we actually resequenced some projects in this PowerPoint to the very end. So this will allow Councilmember Rack to actually recuse himself at the very end. So with that, I'll get started. So just really very quickly, I'm just going to go through the completed projects. You know, here we have the six projects, major projects that we completed in CIP, Aguilow Park, asphalt resurfacing Highlands synthetic turf, Fire Station 13, B-Track, various traffic impact updates and arcade ping pong table youth center. So, next slide please. So at the Aguilow Park, as you can see, it's just mainly repaving kind of parking lot. Send $72,000. Next slide please. Here is a synthetic turf replacement at Highlands Park. Actually, excuse me, this is the infill for Highlands Park synthetic turf that costs about $96,000. Next slide please. This is the HVAC improvements at Fire Station 313, excuse me. This include the little cassettes as well as AC, general AC. Next slide please. Just seeing sports field lighting upgrade at both Burton and Highlands Park. Next slide please. And then we also updated traffic impact study. Next slide please. And then the basketball arcade game as well as the youth center improvements. Next slide please. So this project now getting to the wastewater. As you can see, basically, we're projecting to spend approximately just a little under $14 million, basically just under $7 million a year. You know, a lot of, a lot of the projects that we would do, the city council has actually heard about a lot of our contracts that we do with primary funding source, sewer rates and connection fees. Next slide please. As I indicated, I'm going to show you the six, six projects that have been approved. Items or projects two through six are actually, those are the contracts that you have heard. These are basically before, actually, these are the projects that as relates to the sewer rehab, the alcohol sewer contract, then CCTV inspection, lateral replacement in the roof form. Excuse me. One thing you probably may have heard is in regards to the shelter drive, landslide investigations. So this is a project that could potentially actually slide or needs to be screwed as a result of possible landslides. So next slide please. So what we're requesting for 2021 is very similar to what we have done in the past. The wastewater financial plan is actually in preparation to look at kind of what we're doing as far as our rates and then how, how all our work that we do in locally as well as the Silicon Valley Clean Water Program, their programs, how it affects their sewer rates. And then as I mentioned, the next five contracts, the rehab program, the alcohol sewer CCTV lateral and the roof forming are just generally kind of an ongoing thing that we do from year to year. And then the last project, the general generator actually transfer switch for a sewer pump station. But that's something that, you know, has been in the books, but we do want to actually kind of get that underway. And this is to provide a ability that we could actually power our sewer pump stations with a generator power. Should power that out. Next slide please. So that really concludes anything on the sewer. So we'll go actually, I'm sorry, we'll just really go quickly, very quickly, annual sewer is proof funding is about $25 million over the next five years. Again, we typically spend about $5 million per year. Next slide. Again, annual sewer lateral replacement, 15, 1.5 million over the next five years, average about 300,000. And again, this is to replace the sewer laterals that as a result of either because of failures and or root intrusion. So as you can see in these photos, typically we see where the latars are failed or either because it's clay pipe or cast iron pipes, so we replace it with PVC pipe, which is a little bit more durable and kind of resistant to root intrusion. Next slide please. And then this project is, as I mentioned, the general transfer switch. This is for a sewer pump station. This is actually a kind of a connection, a connector that allow us to power this pump station with our trailer mounted generator. Next slide please. So that concludes actually the discussion in regards to sewer. So the next area that I want to focus on is a street and sidewalk project. So just want to point out that, you know, what we're projecting to spend for the next two years, 21 through 23, is just under $11 million. And this is really kind of an effort that we really like to focus a lot more on the street, be a lot more repaving. The primary funding source are gas taxes, the grants and general capital funding. So next slide please. So this is a slide you probably have seen before. Basically, this kind of depicts the various ranges of street conditions. So the upper left is kind of very good condition. Lower left is good to fair. Upper right is, you know, basically a street that's starting to show at risk situations. And then the very lower right is actually a street that's under poor condition. So, you know, basically, we're currently at kind of a fair to good or the lower left. So we're our PCI or pavement condition index is about the low 60s. And what we're striving for is to get into the upper left or range of PCI range of 70 or so. Next slide please. So previous improved projects is, you know, last year, we were scheduled to spend about $4 million on all the street rehab work. As of late March, we spent about 2.75 million. And we have two more months to go. We anticipate probably spending another outstanding million dollars. So we'll be pretty close to that $4 million budget. Traffic markings, 175, annual sidewalk repair, just under $840,000. Next slide please. So what we're going to be requesting for this coming year, 22, 21, 23, is again, 10.3 million dollars and that's going to be a little over $5 million per year. Annual street markings about pretty much the same, 175,000 per year. And then the annual sample repair reconstruction actually is going down to about $150,000 a year. However, just wanted to point out, you know, we'll continue to do the cycle repair. However, we also have been talking to our risk manager, Sedwick. They are suggesting that we actually use what they call a horizontal shaving of a lot of displaced sidewalks or sidewalks that actually could potentially be a trip hazard. And by actually doing horizontal shaving, the costs are actually very, very inexpensive to do as compared to a full concrete replacement. And it can be done very, very quickly. It's pretty much you could schedule within two days and have it that effect kind of repaired. So it's a rather quick means of actually addressing a lot of the offered differential offsets in the sidewalk. So next slide. So as I indicated, basically, what we're proposing to do is to spend you know, approximately $5 million over the next two years. And then by doing so, you know, what we're hoping to actually move our PCI from the lower 60s and start in an upward trend so that we could go towards the 70 PSI that we were really trying to accomplish. So over the next five years, you know, we will average fairly close to $5 million. And so that, that's what, you know, our focus is going to be. So we anticipate over the next five years, we'll spend just under $24 million on our street repaving projects. Next slide please. Traffic markings, similar because we're going to be doing some additional striping. Oh, excuse me, additional paving. We'll need to continue to do the the striping. And so as you can see in the photos, this is about with the sidewalk, but we'll also be including the center line. Center on tracking as well as other merge strapping as well. So we're not really requesting any additional funding in this case. Next slide please. So sidewalk repair, excuse me. Our annual average is about 132,000. So we are requesting about 150,000. As I mentioned, I believe that this would be, should be sufficient. We have completed the 400 site bath logs that we had approximately two years ago. We'll actually finish that here shortly. And then we anticipate, and then I believe we have about 30 other new requests have come in. We'll address those. thirty other new requests have come in. We'll address those shortly. But as I mentioned, we, I believe a hundred fifty thousand should be sufficient, along with using that horizontal shaving method to some reduce a lot of the issues with the even offsets. Next slide, please. So the general fund capital improvement, basically just really focusing on the twenty-one, twenty-three, again, just under nineteen million dollars. Next slide, please. What we're going to be covering here is kind of Fire Station sixteen, as well as the tree planting on the El Camino Real and the Wheeler Plaza Parking Management System. So next slide, please. So I, this is one project that we didn't include in the completed project, but this is San Carlos Avenue pedestrian safety improvement. You know, actually, what you see on, on site today is phases one and two, that portion of the project is completed. However, the third phase is we're starting design now. And that will be, sorry, that will start from Wellington and go northwards to essentially Beverly. And that should complete the sidewalk improvements, basically from Prospect all the way up to Beverly. Next slide, please.
I'm going to recuse myself now. You can let me know when this conversation is finished. Thank you.
Okay. So Fire Station sixteen, basically what we're requesting is, we're requesting the budget from twenty-two, twenty-three, actually had an allocation of five million dollars. What we're requesting is to advance that money forward to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. One of the reasons we're doing this is because we believe that because of the bidding climate is very positive, that we can actually start construction of our station and take advantage of the bidding climate. So in addition, we're asking additional five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two. Actually, this is to address the solar, solar panels that we'd like to include on the station. So next slide, please.
Hang on just a second. Before we move on, I think we should actually ask the council for questions and comments and discussion related to that specific project. So we don't have to circle Ben. Sarah doesn't have to keep accusing herself if we have questions come up at the end related to it.
Thank you, Jeff. So, so right now, we'll just be taking questions on Fire Station sixteen, correct? And then we'll invite her back. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that the council ask their questions about Fire Station sixteen and then have their discussion about Fire Station sixteen right now. So that Sarah doesn't have to accuse herself again if that comes up at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Okay. Any council questions about Fire Station sixteen? Any, any public comment about Fire Station sixteen?
I don't see any hands.
Okay. Any council discussion or additional comment about Fire Station sixteen? All right. Crystal, if you can invite Vice Mayor McDowell back, that would be great.
Welcome back, Vice Mayor.
So the next project is Wheeler Plaza Parking Management System. Basically, this is a request actually to kind of complete the last portion of the Wheeler Plaza Garage. Basically, council may recall that we were actually scheduled to use the Streetline project. Unfortunately, Streetline, their sensors or, excuse me, the Streetline actually went out of business. And therefore, you know, their, their equipment would be essentially useless. So we actually decided to remove their, their contract out of, out of the final product. However, knowing that this is something that was part of the project all along, we wanted to kind of find a method that we could actually use to actually provide information on the garage availability to the public while using the electronic signboard, signboard out on, so. So this is basically going to be using cameras to track cars that enter and exit the garage itself. So there's some additional new projects include the surveillance camera in public parks. We could go through a little bit more, but any newbie may have some additional information that you may have. The downtown initiative, this, this, of course, guard rail installation in San Carlos Quipville project, as well as the upgrade of the stormwater water control centers at the pump station. So, slide. And then these, these next three items are really related to fires. I may have W T Wax actually respond to these. Next slide, please. So surveillance cameras in Argoel and Highland Park vintage for this project is because we have been experiencing break-ins, the snapshot, as well as various vandalism graffiti in the park. So this would allow us to kind of monitor the areas of parks a little bit more closely and actually find out what's really happening down at the parks themselves. Next slide, please. Downtown Initiative, downtown planning initiatives. So Lisa, Lisa Porras, did you have any comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager. I'll be presenting this particular slide for just a moment. So this capital project is for the downtown planning initiative. And as the council is aware, it really results as one of this year's newest additions to the council's strategic objectives, which was adopted earlier this year. And then with adoption of the council's strategic objective, the council directed staff to prepare a plan to work with residents, property and business owners, the Chamber of Commerce, all city commissions and community members to develop a plan that meets the needs of the downtown now and into the future. And the planning process would essentially consider a wide range of topics, including land use, housing, urban design in the public realm, the streetscape, how it functions and operates, infrastructure and the maintenance thereof, building design, massing, how we would approach events in the downtown, traffic and circulation, all multi-modal components, including ensuring walkability, addressing dining outdoors and parklets and plazas. So this project is expected to take roughly two years to complete and would begin in actually the second half of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and then run all through a fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then finish in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So staff is requesting a total of one million dollars. That is our estimate at this time to complete such an endeavor. And the figure can go up or down depending upon actual proposals that we receive once we issue the RFP. And once we do receive these proposals, we'll, we'll have more specificity on the actual cost and the overall timeline, and all of which would eventually be brought before the council for consideration in approving a professional services agreement with said consultant. So that concludes my short overview of this particular item and happy to present it back over to the next presenter. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So what this project is, is actually installation of guard rail on Burton Avenue. This is, location is approximately near Sarah Lane. Apparently, there had been multiple drive-through crashes, fences. And so, you know, we were looking at opportunities to provide additional safety barrier, again, on this portion of Britain Avenue. Slide, please. San Carlos Quipville project, this is a pilot program. Council may be aware that we actually received the two hundred seventy-four thousand ATP grant, or in other words, that's the Act of Transportation Program grant. And what this is really entails is along San Carlos Avenue from L to El Camino Real, the block from L to Walnut will actually add additional bike lanes on, on, on that block. From Walnut to Laurel, it will actually, the diagonal parking is on the north side of San Carlos Avenue, actually be removed and replaced instead with parallel parking and then a new buffered bike lane along that side of the road. And then on south side, they'll eliminate the parking and, but also provide buffered bike lane. And then from Laurel to El Camino is basically, it's removing parking altogether and then providing a buffered bike lane, you know, from Laurel to El Camino. This is really intended to be a pilot program, and it's intended to be a kind of a non-permanent improvement, which means that it, you know, we wouldn't really be pouring any concrete. But basically, this provides an opportunity to see how installed in buffered bike lanes or additional bike lanes in additional areas for a widened pedestrian pathway. So at, at what such time, you know, give the community an opportunity to see how they like this type of improvement. You know, this does require quite enough hours to reach as a result because we are limiting some of the parking or we actually modifying the parking itself. So we haven't really started that effort yet, but you know, we know that we're going to have to do a really robust outreach on this program for this project. Next slide, please. Stormwater motor control pump center. Basically, all some pump stations, typically, we don't really use them throughout all the year. It's usually just during winter, winter months. Most of our stations do require, you know, have a motor control center as well as pump. This gives us an opportunity to kind of reevaluate all our pumps as well as the motor control center. Essentially, the motor control center controls the operation of pump, whether they go, when they go on, when they turn off. And this, since we haven't done this for quite some time, it'd be good to kind of reassess the equipment and make sure that it's all running appropriately. Next slide. So with that, I think I'll turn this over to Deputy Park Chief Chuck Lask on the next three slides. Chuck?
Good morning, Mayor Palmer, Lieutenant, council members. So we are requesting some funding for some upgrades to Fire Station thirteen. The station was rebuilt in the mid nineties. We moved into the facility in nineteen ninety-six. And one of the areas within the station we're looking to upgrade is the training classroom. And we're looking to upgrade the tables, chairs, window coverings, carpeting. And then the other area in this facility we're looking to upgrade is the captain's office. And that is in preparation for the rebuild of Fire Station sixteen and relocating the Fire Station sixteen crew to Station thirteen and to be able to accommodate two company officers within the captain's office. New office furniture and upgrade to that room. Next slide, please. And then the next request is for a standards of cover study. And I'm unaware of the last time that we've had one for San Carlos. And so we are looking to do one in Redwood City and then take advantage of that opportunity to incorporate the two San Carlos stations at the cost of forty thousand dollars. And, and with that study, we really are going to be evaluating our effective response force and looking at such things as our response time, not just for medical calls, but for structure fires, which would include all the apparatus that would arrive on scene for a structure fire coming, coming from our neighboring jurisdictions. And we would be looking to bring onboard a consultant that would be looking at historical data as well as looking at future development within San Carlos. As we know, we're seeing larger buildings being built on the existing lots that we have. And all of that ends up having an impact to the service model that we deliver. And so we're just trying to get some real data that we could use to decide what our future response model would look like. Next slide. And then we do, we have started a drone program within the fire department. In twenty eighteen, we received the certificate of authorization for our drone program through the FAA. And that program allows us to train our employees to allow them to fly drones. And what we're looking for is the ability to purchase three drones to have on our three shifts at our fire stations in San Carlos. It is a emerging technology in the fire service. I do have a short little story to share because we actually just used one of the drones that we had at a structure fire we had Friday morning at Sims Metal. And we were able to use that drone to fly over the debris pile that was on fire. And the drones have a thermal camera. We were able to detect where the most hottest part of that fire was and directed our fire streams at that fire, which actually reduced our amount of time on scene as well as reduced the amount of pollution into the environment. And it really wasn't something we had thought we would end up using a drone for. But once we had it in the air, we were quickly able to realize some of the benefits. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So Parkinland Project, basically, we're going to process actually a project in, process spent forty thousand in twenty-one, twenty-three. And this is actually, next slide, please. And this is actually for the Highlands Park tennis court resurfacing project in twenty-one, twenty-three. Next slide. As you can see, this is, my understanding that these park, tennis courts haven't really been resurfaced or repaired a long time. And so they are about due for the upgrade. Next slide, please. Parkinland Lou project, in twenty-one, twenty-three, we're proposing to spend sixty-five thousand dollars. Next slide. Sixty-five thousand is really to do a parking, parking occupancy study. You know, originally wanted to do that in early twenty twenty. Unfortunately, as a result of, next slide, please. Unfortunately, as a result of COVID, knowing that we were trying to take the parking study during, when everybody was at home at work, it really won't provide us the correct information that we would need. So we wanted to at least let the people start to return back, back to work when it gets a little bit more normalized and COVID is being addressed a little bit more so that we can actually do the complete parking study. Next slide. So for housing, I'd like to turn this over to Adam Aronson. Adam?
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Adam Aronson, Economic Development Housing Manager. So in terms of our housing fund projects and capital projects, for FY twenty twenty-one, we have four point seven million dollars budgeted. And for FY twenty-one to twenty-three, we have three million dollars. Now, we do not have any projects yet for beyond FY twenty-three. Next slide, please. And with regards to specific projects, for FY twenty-one, we have about three point nine million budgeted towards the Cherry Street Below Market Rate Housing Project. And then FY twenty-one to twenty-three, we anticipate another three million dollars going towards that project. Then eight hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-one for this to study land use and regulatory options. And then for the eight one seven Walnut Street redevelopment project, we have seven point three million budgeted in FY twenty-one. And that is all I have.
Thank you. So Library Fund, basically, in twenty-one, twenty-three, we're projecting to spend one million dollars in that. Next slide, please. And that is really for the library building and emergency backup power. So this is something that we've wanted to do as a result of kind of dealing with a lot of the D G E public PSPs, Public Safety Power Shot. So next slide, please. So basically, this really slide really kind of documents that we do have a lot of other projects that are in part of the capital improvement program, or they are remaining unfunded. So we have over two hundred and one million dollars that are, those projects are unfunded. Madam Mayor, I guess the next slides going forward are related to Burton Park or youth center. So I suggest that may perhaps council want to actually have discussions on any projects that were wrapped and already presented. And then Councilman Rack actually couldn't refuse himself for the meaning of the.
And I understand Councilmember Rack has to duck out at eleven fifteen. So one option might be to just skip these projects for now, continue on with the presentation to its conclusion. And then we can even start with questions and discussion from council on the other projects. And then at eleven fifteen, circle back around to the Burton Park projects, just for. other projects and then at eleven fifteen, circle back around to the Burton Park uh projects just for uh efficiency sake. Uh, but I'll leave that up to the uh city council on how you'd like uh us to proceed here.
Okay, just, just to clarify, so it sounds like um outside of Burton Park, there's some additional uh projects that uh the staff is going to present on. And so you're suggesting that we move forward with those at this time and then move to Burton Park at eleven fifteen? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, basically just put a pin in everything related to Burton Park and the youth center for now and um and continue on with the presentation, but with the understanding that at eleven fifteen, we'll circle back and tackle those.
Okay, right, is that um, does that work for everyone?
Works for me.
Okay, I see, great, all right, thank you, um.
Okay, um, a- a- actually, the the next, next three slides are actually with um Amy Newby, however, they are related to Burton Park.
All right, so it sounds like we are at that point, Jeff. Yeah, okay, fantastic, all right, so why don't we go ahead and take council questions and then we'll do public comment and then come back for council discussion and comment. And I see uh council member Collins' hand has been up for a while, uh, and then we'll go to council member Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Stephen, thank you, that was a uh great presentation. Uh, I really like a- all the projects that are being planned and the funding for it. The, the one thing I wanted to ask you about, I think we touched on this last Monday night in terms of sidewalks. Um, I brought up um a particular location that didn't have a sidewalk and it, and I think Adam might have brought up another one. But it occurred to me that maybe you could have your staff do a survey uh and of the areas around town that A, don't have sidewalks and B, might be a candidate for them. Um, and I'm sure that, you know, there's a lot others, or maybe not a lot, but there's enough others that maybe we ought to just take an inventory. Not that we can fund it at this time, but if it's a not a a list that's too extensive and we can appropriate some funding for it, you know, maybe, you know, half a million dollars or possibly a little bit less, um, that obviously be up to the rest, to all of us. Um, but I'm thinking maybe that might be a better way to go about it is just take an inventory of what's out there and what we might want to consider.
The council member Collins, just real quick, is this a clarifying question or is this discussion point? I just want to make sure.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we want it to be a discussion, but I'm just thinking going forward is that it might be something that since we're talking about sidewalk repairs, maybe something we can have a future discussion on. But um I was thinking, you know, uh, it, it might be something that could, that the public work staff could, could it? Um, when they could fit it into their schedule, just do a survey because at some point it may relate to this budget, maybe not this year, but next year.
Um, actually, I believe that that's an excellent idea. I think um, you know, we do have a a sense of, you know, the areas that sidewalks are probably needed, but we probably need maybe a little bit more detail, certainly doing the study would actually provide a lot of that information for us. So that's certainly makes an idea that, you know, if if that's the direction of council, we certainly uh would like to proceed on that project or that segment.
All right, then, Madam Mayor, what I would suggest is that that we, the couns- council consider giving that direction to the staff.
Understood, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we manage our time, so let's maybe table this.
That's really all I had and we don't need to have to deal with it today.
Okay, fantastic, okay. Thank you. All right, council member Dugan and then council member Rack?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, and uh Stephen, yeah, good rundown. Um, you guys are uh working on a lot clearly, so I appreciate uh seeing the full scope of that. Um, also really happy to see uh that phase three of the San Carlos Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project is fully funded and and about to get underway. Um, somewhat echoing uh council member Collins, just uh sidewalks and 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 let's do touch on this in discussion. Uh, but my question is, um, beyond this phase three of San Carlos Avenue, do we have any other um significant sidewalk addition projects in any stage of planning or consideration? Is there, are there any on that unfunded project list? And then related, are there any sort of projects um uh to advance our uh bicycle master plan and all the good work that went into that? Like, you know, we, we, we did that complete survey. Are there any capital improvements i- in some phase of plan? Like, I didn't observe any, um, and just wondering, uh, you know, where those might fall on, on, on your future planning?
So the first, first, um, answer your first question in regards, um, you know, um, other than the um the Quikmill project where, you know, basically that, that is um, kind of works well with the bike, bike and master plan where we're actually installing that uh the bike lanes as well as kind of a wider pedestrian pathway. I mean, that, that's certain opportunity, however, as I mentioned, it's, it's a pilot program. So it's only if that that project elects to move forward that we would probably want to widen the sidewalks, uh specifically um those, those areas um in, near Laurel and El Camino rail on San Carlos Avenue. Um, I'm not really aware of any other major sidewalk work where we're going to complete from one end to the other. I mean, most of our focus on sidewalk has been really kind of repair, sidewalk repair. So, but I, I, I think, you know, actually conducting the s- study as councilman, uh, how the Collins had indicated, I think that will provide a lot more detail on specifics and the length and perhaps feasibly as well as, you know, just general cost of what would be due, uh, what needs to be done. And I think that will provide a lot of good uh information relative to, um, you know, how, how do we prioritize that type of work? And then in regards to bicycle, um, bicycle improvements or pedestrian improvements in the bike master plan, um, you know, we're still trying to couple together a lot of the funding, um, you know, to actually do a lot of that work. However, you know, whatever we can do as a result of, for instance, if, if uh like the repaving project, uh, street repaving project that we might have, if it, if those streets uh do require whatever improvement that might be done, whether it's additional striping, um, you know, we would like to include that in as part of the um street repaving project. So basically, we will touch that tree once and not have to come back at a later, later moment or later time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second question, the uh, the cameras we're installing in various parks, are i- is that surveillance going to be focused on kind of structures like the snack shack or other kind of specific areas of vandalism? Or are these going to be kind of broad, observing all activity in park, um, uh, you know, configuration? And is the intent just to go back and look up incidents? Or are we actually going to be like monitoring our parks now on a real-time basis?
Well, I, I think, you know, for, for the most part, I mean, I know like Arguello Park, I, I know we had several break-ins uh in that snack shack as well as in Highlands. So I think, you know, a lot of the focus is on, on the uh, uh, cameras will be at focus on, you know, snack shack as a result of kind of the vandalism as well as the break-in. You know, I don't anticipate that we will be doing a monitoring the full part, you know, both parts can be fairly large to uh ground cover. But I, I think what we want to do is maybe focus specifically near um, near the snack shacks. Um, and then if we need to widen the search out, you know, we could actually um install other cameras throughout the park if, if it's needed.
Okay, and is it your department that's, that's gonna own these feeds and then you hand it off to police if, if need be?
Um, well, that's something that, you know, I'd probably want to work with our IT department. There, there would be instrumental in, you know, um, installing the cameras and, and deciding where, where um the information resides. Uh, I don't believe that uh public works department would actually maintain that information.
Okay. If I may chime in, we installed cameras at Burton Park in twenty eighteen when we did the youth center renovation. Um, that was the tail end of that project. Um, and we currently keep all the, the feed in a cloud-based storage system. We do work with IT, they've been really supportive in helping launch that um at Burton Park. And so we would do the same thing with Highlands and with Arguello. We would focus on a lot of the active spaces and where we've seen the vandalism, which includes the field, uh, the parking lot area, picnic sites, um, to just see if we can mitigate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, council member Dugan, council member Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Stephen, thanks for the presentation, uh, and uh thanks for all the work over the past year. I got, I used a sidewalk uh up or I guess a cross, crosswalk upgrade on Woodland and Britton. Uh, it's Woodland and Britton Avenue. Uh, last night was great to push the button, have the flashing lights and have all the cars stop. So it's nice to not have to try and dash across the road. I wanted to just touch base on the, it, it sort of related to the Wheeler Plaza uh parking management system. And, and more so just to follow up, we had talked previously about trying to address the electric vehicle parking over there and maybe charging stations, and I, I don't see anything around that. And so I wanted to understand kind of where that is in the process and it's because we're now looking at two-year budget and that seems to keep getting pushed out. So I'd like to just get your feedback on that.
So we have an existing project, um, C I P project actually, um, which includes, you know, adding three additional um EV charging stations in Wheeler Plaza. So uh after completion of that, that would be a total of six uh charge stations in Wheeler Plaza. This project will also actually paint um the, the walls, interior walls of the garage. Um, maybe make it a little bit lighter to provide a little bit more, make it lighter, so it's not the garage, uh, it's not so dark. And then the areas that, you know, we're, we're painting maybe not that effective as we intend to actually provide a, a additional lighting. And again, just more for security. But in regards to the, the three new EV stations, that, that's currently being uh worked on right now. Um, you know, we're, I'm working with the uh city manager's office and we're trying to um spec, specs, spec out the three new station, three new EV charge stations uh in the uh Wheeler Plaza right now.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, council member Rack, Vice Mayor MacDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have two questions for Stephen. Thank you for your uh presentation, Stephen. My first question is in regards to um the one-on-one freeway and Holly um exchange that looks like it's been kind of pushed off to future years. I'm wondering if, for the public's benefit, if you could just kind of talk about what's going on with that project and also touch on um the bike and pedestrian overcrossing over one-on-one that I know a lot of people in our community were looking forward to. If you could kind of um give us an update on, on what's going on with that, thank you.
Certainly. So this project has, you know, councils where, you know, this is kind of a, a long-time project. Uh, unfortunately, uh, as you know, in twenty nineteen, we actually went out to bid um uh for the project. However, um, we, we had to bid the project as a little bit different thing than, than what we're really used to. But in any event, um, what really happened, what made our bid uh a little off was, you know, Caltrans came in with their um express lane project. And so we actually had to uh have the contractor um kind of delay his start almost, almost a year after he submitted his bid. So obviously, his bids were, were going to be much, much higher than, than what we anticipated and what we actually were able to fund. That being said, is because we couldn't award the, the contract, um, you know, um, we, we were left trying to cobble uh some additional funding together. Unfortunately, uh, as council is well aware, we had several um funding sources and some of these funding sources had timelines or deadlines that we actually could comply with. And unfortunately, uh, those deadlines were coming up very quickly and so we lost a lot of the funding itself. So right now, um, this project is pretty much on hold, uh, because we don't have the, the funding necessary uh to actually go out to bid and do the project. So, and, and that really relates to both the um, the actual vehicular bridge as well as the bicycle pet bridge uh across one-on-one. So we're kind of in a hold mode. We still are looking um for additional funding, outside funding that we could possibly utilize. And, and, you know, just last week, we actually had a discussion with C K members to look for opportunities there. We have been working with Jackie Spears' office uh looking for additional funding. Um, so unfortunately, it's, it's, there's a lot of projects out there and there's a lot of competition. And so we haven't been successful in actually um accruing those funds.
And I would just add, add real quickly that, um, you know, what we've heard from the, the sort of the traffic grant funding community is that um there's a large-scale uh Highway ninety-two uh interchange project coming forward that's, that's gonna uh soak up a lot of the available grant funding for the, the next few cycles. But that we, we, we're committed to continuing to push this project um forward uh out there to the grant uh funding agencies. Uh, we have a shovel-ready project that's designed. I'm confident that it, at some point, the stars will align and we will, um, you know, have the, the grant funding necessary to do the project reestablished so that uh our community gets a, a needed project that's a regional project. Uh, but also, you know, has a, a fair shake in terms of the local matching dollars that are required uh to make sure that it's in line with what other communities in the Bay Area have, have paid uh for similar projects in their communities.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I know that several people are especially disappointed by the delay with the bike and pet overcrossing, uh, myself included. So I'm glad that we're gonna continue to seek out sources of funding and see, you know, where, when that project can, can get built. Um, my second question, Stephen, is about the uh tree planting along the berm um, along El Camino or Old County Road that was part of the trestle project. Um, could you give a little color for the public about why that has been delayed? Um, I believe it's with electrification, but wondering if you can just provide a little more um information and perhaps a timeline?
Right, so, so the, the, this, uh, the tree project is actually, um, there are approximately fifty-plus trees that are supposed to be planted along the toe of the berm uh of the railroad um, along from essentially a rail uh all the way to the southern border of this uh city. Um, you know, we were received about a hundred fifty thousand dollars from Transit Village actually to contribute to um the construction of the uh, you know, planting of the trees as well as all the irrigation. That's uh, that amount of money is really not going to go far enough actually to close to planting a tree. But one of the reasons why we wanted this, to pause this project a little bit is because as, as councils where Caltrain is going through the electrification process, they had a, a lot of their support poles that they were going to plant on the berm itself. We weren't quite certain where, what, any of the other infrastructure they may, maybe um it would be hard to do and we're afraid that if we restarted planting trees and it interfered with any of their infrastructure, that they would either ask us to remove those trees or um, or redo some of the irrigation lines, so we felt it was probably safer to actually wait until electrification project is completed and we, we actually know where all their infrastructure is. But that being said, we, we'd still have to cobble together uh some additional funding to actually plant the trees. Now, the one caveat that, you know, we, council probably is well, well aware is, you know, we're, appears that we're heading into a um, another drought. So one of the concerns is do it now, do we actually move forward with planting, you know, fifty trees, even if we had all the, the funding, uh, knowing that perhaps we could actually have some type of either voluntary or perhaps even mandatory um water reduction? So that's something that, you know, we have been in contact uh with Cal Water and, you know, to try, try to find out specifically what type of program they, they will be implementing. They haven't settled on anything just yet, however, we do anticipate something will be, happen, um, you know, similar to what occurred back in twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen approximately.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll save the rest of my comments for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, uh, so thank you for this presentation, Stephen, um, really appreciate it as well as Chuck Lax and others. Um, so with respect to Wheeler uh Plaza Parking and the license plate readers uh for, you know, parking enforcement, um, one of the things I've noted is, uh, you know, with great, you know, when I do drive downtown, I typically park in Wheeler Plaza because like parking is plentiful, especially on the second floor. And uh to, um, from, from my perspective, um, you know, kind of staging some of these projects, I'd like to understand better because until such time that there's actually, um, you know, significant demand in that garage, I'm just concerned about making investments around parking enforcement. So could you talk about the expected timing around the installation um of those EV chargers that you talked about? Because that could potentially drive demand and then also the wayfinding um program uh that we've uh set aside budget for, which would lead people to that garage. And then the painting of the interior, again, I, I think it's not necessarily clear unless you've really studied that garage and explored it that you know that there's a second floor of parking, it's not that you know that there's a second floor of parking. It's not super obvious and it's not particularly well lit even during the daytime. So could you help us understand kind of what that sequence of work is and at what point do? Because we're also hearing from the public, we don't have enough parking downtown. But every time I go downtown, there's lots of parking in Wheeler Plaza, no matter what time of day. So could you help us understand that this, uh?
I'd, I'd be happy to. So, uh, as I indicated earlier, uh, we do have a current project that is scheduled to be painting the interior walls of the garage as well as install the EV, uh, stations. And so, um, I, I know Adam Aronson from Community Development, you know, he, he has, uh, seen both of the wayfinding project. First wayfinding project is the, the citywide wayfinding process. Those would be kind of, um, located throughout and kind of direct, um, the public towards Wheeler Garage itself. But he also has a wayfinding, um, project that actually directs cars where the exits are, you know, where the second floor is, uh, for the Wheeler Garage itself. You know, I, I think the sequencing really, probably what really needs to happen is we probably do need to paint the, the walls first. It's my understanding that the wayfinding, uh, signs for the garage itself, they're, they're, they're actually decals. So they would actually stick to the wall. So it would make more sense to actually have us paint the walls first and then have the, the wayfindings, um, decals kind of placed in Wheeler Garage, um, you know, afterwards. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, that is a project that we wanted to do last year. We put that one on pause as a result of what's happened with COVID and kind of our focus kind of changed to other areas. However, as a result of, you know, what we can do now is, is, uh, you know, maybe we could actually go out to bid and actually get the walls painted so that, you know, the, the, the following steps or adding the wayfinding to, to the garage can, can, can start to occur. Um, the timing of the EV station for Wheeler Garage itself or the new three, three EV station for the garage. I'll, I'll probably need to get back with you. I, I don't recall specifically the time schedule of when those are to go in. However, I, I know, um, the consultant that, that has been used is actively looking at the, uh, the infrastructure and, and what can be done and how, um, how we can actually place the, the three, uh, three new chargers in, in the station itself. So I'll need to get back with you on, on the timing of when those, uh, stations will be, uh, constructed. And then in regards to the citywide wayfinding sign, I perhaps I'll, I'll turn that over to Adam Aronson and fill you in on, on that project and schedule. Adam?
Yes, uh, thank you, Stephen. So yes, we, we do still have funding for the construction installation of the wayfinding signs. The design component of that is essentially complete. We've been working with Caltrans to kind of determine the feasibility of some of the signs that are on El Camino. Um, but really the main thing holding us back is just staff capacity to manage the program. Um, I do hope we'll be able to release the RFP soon. We have an open recruitment for a new economic development coordinator. And I think once that person comes on board, we'll be better able to handle managing that project and get an RFP released this year.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Um, and then, um, I, I noted, uh, uh, and Adam, uh, this is actually related to, to, well, I'll, I'll wait because this is Burton Park later. So never mind. Um, okay. So, uh, uh, I think that's all the questions it appears that we have for, for now. Uh, why don't we go ahead and then move to, uh, public comment? Uh, Crystal, is there any members of the community or public who wish to comment at this time?
Yes, we do have one hand up from Sonia Elks. Uh, if you can unmute yourself, Sonia.
Yes, thank you. Um, Sarah, thank you for asking about the bike ped bridge funding. That I think I have a little bit more clarity on that, um, and the whole interchange. I wanted to, um, make sure that, uh, everybody knows that San Trans is undergoing this reimagined project right now. They're actually looking to communities for input on what needs to get rerouted, uh, where new routes should go, old routes, you know, brought back. Um, and there's a strong community push to expand this current very successful route number, uh, 61 that currently only serves, um, school times. It serves everyone, but it's, uh, during the school, towards the schools, and then the afternoon away from the schools, um, distributes. And what we'd really like to see, especially with the electrification of the Caltrain coming with, uh, up to six times an hour trains. People are very interested in not, you know, adding to the congestion, which is going to be a bigger and bigger issue as things get, come back to life in our town. Um, so we're suggesting that we can, that San Trans consider running that 61 route, which is, um, modeled on the old 46th route. Which, which if you don't know, um, basically went, uh, we're, we're suggesting going up El Camino, south on El Camino, and then turning right on Britton, going all the way up, uh, Britton, and then, um, taking a right on Crestview, right on Melundy, left on Alameda, and then in the mornings in the school times, the, the one of the buses could go up to the Four Corners, uh, to drop kids off there. But, um, kind of a Caltrain downtown designated, um, route would go to the right and go down to, uh, Caltrain in downtown. And then come back up and repeat that ideally every hour, um, maybe definitely more often during the busy commute times. For this to happen, for it to make sense though, we definitely need to make sure that cars don't, I mean, buses don't wait behind cars. San Trans is looking to make sure that, uh, lights signaling priority for buses on where those are. But wherever we have four-way stops, um, I, I just want to put out there that there's a way that we could use that, bus is able to go into the current street parking lane to go around long lines of cars. So they can drop passengers off, pick them up, and then have priority. Kind of a queue jump system. That is what I wanted to put out there for, as well as the sidewalk projects, um.
Sonia, if you could, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let's move to council discussion. All right, uh, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, yeah, I guess I, I, I just, I would like us to perhaps consider or discuss as a council or, you know, uh, and, and, and just think about, and I know we have a lot of priorities, but I really appreciate a council member Collins thoughts on a survey of where sidewalks may be needed, um, and just kind of a broader thought that, um, you know, if, if, if there's, I, I, you know, when we think about the balance that we strike here in San Carlos on mobility, uh, just, you know, we are a very car-centric community, but we keep getting signals from our community, uh, that we want, uh, it, it balanced with pedestrian and, and bicycles. And we just went through a whole, uh, bike master plan in the last year. And, and I realized we have this quick build pilot program that, that just, that strikes me as a very modest kind of reaction to going through a whole master planning process. And, and I would like to see us make, make a real priority out of, uh, uh, realizing um, other components of that master plan and specifically how it relates to sidewalks as well. I mean, I, I know some of our roads need improvement. Uh, we have significant budget on that. I, I personally would like to see more balance, uh, maybe out of that budget, even if we can't find additional sources, to actually adding more sidewalks in town. Uh, you know, it's kind of, if you just observe, it took us until 2021 to even add sidewalks on San Carlos Avenue past one of our elementary schools. Um, I think our sidewalks are way behind, uh, every, you know, kind of when you think of the quality of life here in San Carlos. Uh, we have a lot of kids walking on a lot of roads without sidewalks and, and I just think we can do better. And we just did that work on the, um, uh, Bike Master Plan. And, and I just think so cataloging where else we'd want sidewalks, but how then that relates to the Bike Master Plan. That just seems like something that should be a priority. And, you know, I'm a little surprised. There really isn't any budgetary push in that direction that I can see over the next two years. Um, so I'd just make that observation.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had, I have four quick observations. Number one, I wanted to build on the mayor's, uh, discussion about Wheeler Plaza Parking. And I really appreciated the points that you brought up, Laura. I think that they were very insightful. I, I want to incentivize people to park in that garage as well. And I agree with you. I've been to that garage at all times of day and the second story is usually completely empty. So I'm not wild about ticketing people at this time if they're spending 15 minutes extra in the garage. Maybe if it becomes overcapacity and, you know, people are waiting and can't get in, then maybe, um, then, then I would be more inclined. But I, I agree with the painting. We should get some, the, the signage, um, you know, we have other improvements to do first. Number two, the trees on the berm. Thank you, Stephen, for explaining the electrification, um, you know, difficulties and the drought. And I take those points very seriously. Um, I do think that a deal is a deal with our East Side neighbors. And we did say that the money would be used for trees. So when the timing is right, I do think that we need to make that happen. We can get recycled water to water the trees. Um, so I do want to keep that on our radar. And separately, I spoke with the city manager about cleaning up the weeds, um, that are currently all around the trees that are down by trestles. So, um, Stephen, I appreciate you taking that on and, and cleaning up what we do have. Um, number three, the sidewalk program. I agree with Councilmember Dugan and Councilmember Collins. I would like to perhaps talk about budgeting money. I heard Councilmember Collins mention a half a million dollars. Um, we do have the PG&E settlement money that's currently in the street resurfacing budget. I would be happy to target that for sidewalk improvements, um, because I do think that it's unconscionable that we have really busy roads like Britton and Alameda that are missing big chunks of sidewalk. And, um, I agree with Councilmember Dugan. And then number four, uh, the parking study at the parking lot near Trader Joe's. Um, I've been in contact with, um, Stephen Machida about the rapid flashing light that needs to go in there first. I think that that parking lot is underutilized because it is really unsafe to cross El Camino. And I think that once that light goes in and it becomes a little safer to cross, um, that's something that I've heard from business owners down there that their employees don't want to park there because they can't cross El Camino. So I appreciate the timing on that to get that signal in first and let people use it and then figure out the utilization. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rec?
Sorry, my unmute button was not working. It kept disappearing on me. Uh, I just, uh, I, I guess I really just want to say yes to what everybody says, uh, on these things. I appreciate the mayor's comments around the Wheeler Plaza. I agree. I don't think we should be enforcing until we can get some of these other things, uh, done first. I, the sidewalk program, I agree, we need to do a study, at least at a minimum, do a study, um, around that. And then look at how we can do infill and repair more sidewalks. And I agree with the Vice Mayor on, uh, that lot over there because it's, it's just not safe to cross over there. So spending money on a study doesn't make sense at this point. So yes, to all the great ideas and that's all I, that's all I had.
Thank, uh, thank you, Councilmember Rec. All right. Uh, so, uh, from my perspective, um, just to, you know, build on what was discussed. I, uh, you know, appreciate the, the comment with respect to sidewalks. Um, and I heard, uh, um, Public Works Director Stephen Machida talk about touching a street once. Um, I, I really like that concept. You know, we recognize that we need to, um, you know, rehabilitate our road resurfacing, uh, the striping projects. Anytime a, a street is touched with that, we have to also, well, at least with the resurfacing, right? We have to, uh, look at ADA ramps, um, and that can drive up the cost. Um, and then, you know, to the, everyone's point here, we've talked to, you know, we've adopted that bike and master ped plan. You know, we want to encourage people to get, um, walking and riding their bikes again. So to the extent to which, uh, we can optimize, um, you know, and identify parts of the city, especially near schools, where, uh, we can make some of these improvements if we think about kind of volume and capacity. And then of course, uh, leading into the downtown, which we have, I think, uh, the funds, uh, that are suggested, uh, right now are, are modest. And given it's a pilot program, I think that we'll get some great learning out of it. Uh, so it sounds like maybe there's alignment around doing some sort of, uh, study session in the near future to look at all of these different, uh, aspects, um, of our programming and try to identify, uh, the, the, the areas in the city where we would want to, you know, really make some, uh, significant improvements. Um, I, I hope I'm hearing that correctly from everyone. Um, all right. And then, uh, as far as, uh, the sidewalk and the efficiency program and the horizontal, um, uh, scraping of that, I think that makes sense. If we can reduce the, the budget, uh, for repairs there and, and make a, a solution that's, uh, better, we can then reinvest those dollars and, uh, actually building sidewalks in parts of the city. Uh, so that makes sense to me. Um, I'm also appreciative of the, of the continued focus on the sewers. Um, we, you know, we talked at length, I think it was about a year or so ago, about our aging infrastructure and just the amount of, uh, money that's going to be required to make sure that we stay, um, sustainable in that area. Uh, I appreciate that as well. So, um, those were, those were all my comments at this point. All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Stephen, just building on your comments. Do we, or maybe Jeff, do we need to allocate money for a sidewalk study or?
Well, basically what happens at this point is, um, we take, we, you know, we synthesize the message. And I think the message around sidewalks and, um, uh, ped bike projects, uh, has been received loud and clear. So what we'll do now is make some modifications to our proposal and then we'll highlight those for you in June, to, uh, consider including in the actual adopted budget. That's typically how we approach this. If, if there's more, you know, insight or discussion you want to have, but, uh, to help inform us, now would be the time to do that. But I think we've got a, a pretty good idea of the fact that this is a priority for you and how we might, uh, proceed. In terms of sidewalks, it sounds like probably the first step will be, uh, to do this study and identify the areas, um, where those improvements, as Stephen said, are, are most feasible and beneficial so that you can consider a program in its entirety as opposed to sort of trying to allocate, piece together projects, um, which can be inefficient and lead to, you know, some battles in the community about whose streets get to go first and all that. Um, that's likely going to take a little time, but as soon as that study's done, it kind of tied into my earlier comments about, you know, if we finish that study, um, six months from now, you know, and we present it to you, we won't, we won't then wait, you know, until the next budget cycle to, you know, begin proposing projects and those kinds of things. You'll do that right then, um, to get started. So it's probably an example, uh, the projects themselves will be an example of projects then that'll come forward to you before the next big budget cycle. Uh, as soon as we sort of have a list of how we think you ought to, uh, consider proceeding. Um, and then any other, uh, funding priorities around, uh, bike or ped projects that we can identify before June, we'll include in our budget recommendations to you and highlight them in the presentation in June.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the questions, Sarah. Thank you, Jeff. Um, and, and also I wanted to mention too, building on, um, Vice Mayor McDowell's, uh, discussion around the trees on the berm. Um, if, if, if it's possible, if staff could reach out to the leaders of the Greater East Side, San Carlos, and just give them an update on where things stand. I think last time I spoke to them, they weren't really clear on where that project stood. So that would be really helpful.
We'll make sure we do that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Dugan, I see your hands up.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, point. Um, and, and I'm glad we're going to look at sidewalks more formally. But as I recall, even through some of the granting and, and other processes by which, uh, the San Carlos Avenue, uh, program came together and perhaps even our bike master plan, I think some of that survey work's been done, uh, like Safe Route to Schools, uh, have mapped out some of that. Uh, and that probably is not a bad place for us to start. So I would just, uh, encourage staff to, you know, I think some of this work's been done. Uh, probably the first effort is just to kind of pull everything into one place and see what we have.
I think that's a great observation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, all right. Uh, so it looks like there's no additional, uh, discussion on this particular section of capital improvement. So, um, I think at this point, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, we can now move to the projects, uh, related to Burton Park. And if, if that's the case, then Councilmember Rec can step out?
Yeah, I just, just, we'll just do kind of a last check in here, um, with you to make sure that we, you know, we're, the council and the staff are on the same page. Uh, so I'm seeing it as we've pretty much covered the entirety of the budget at this point with the exception of the Burton Park, uh, uh, projects and the youth center projects. Um, so if you feel comfortable that you've provided all the feedback and thoughts you wanted to discuss today, with the exception of that one particular area, then we're ready to proceed with Burton. If not, I think, because it sounds like when we're done with Burton, we'll be wrapping up. So just want to make sure everybody's good with where we're at before we, um, say goodbye to Councilmember Rec and, um, and finish up our, uh, our study session today.
All right. All right. Well, thank, thank you for that, that prompt. Um, one, one quick thing, and I, I don't know where this would go, um, Stephen Machida, but it was pointed out to me that, um, I've learned recently that, um, methane, uh, gas from organic decomposition is actually, uh, the second largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. And, um, it was noted that, uh, along our downtown corridor, we have recycling bins. And it was noted that along our downtown corridor, we have recycling bins and we have trash can bins, but we don't have any bins related to compost like we do in some of the parks. And I don't know that, I don't know what type of expenses related to that. But, you know, where would that type of discussion come up? Would that be something that we would talk about in our climate mitigation action planning session? Or would that be something that we would potentially discuss as part of this budgeting exercise?
So that is something that we could, you know, look into a little bit further. I know, you know, we are looking, trying to address some of that issues related to SB 1383. But yeah, if council provides us some direction, certainly we do see opportunities for grant funding to actually add like perhaps a third can or that composting can. We can put them in the downtown. But if that's something the council was just to move forward with it, certainly we'd be happy to, you know, proceed.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I can tell, I'd be happy to support that effort. And I know as a board member for SBWA, we're, you know, we're looking at new technologies to help deal with some of the sorting and taking some of that green waste into energy. So I think, you know, how we can be a part of that solution. And to Stephen's point about SB 1383, I think that's a worthwhile discussion and happy to be supportive of that.
Right, thank you. All right, so it sounds like there's, there's some interest.
I'm interested. I'll throw my hat in the ring for that one, too.
All right, thank you so much. All right.
Sounds good from my end, too.
Great, okay, we have five, five yeses. Awesome. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, I think we can move on to the Burton Park discussion. And thank you, Councilmember Rack, for your participation and your contribution this morning.
Sorry, just to be clear, do you, do you need me to come back? Or are we, should I just plan on being done? Will we have a wrap-up?
Jeff?
Rebecca, you can chime in here, too, if need be. I was thinking you did not need to come back, that we've pretty much got, we've covered everything with, with the exception of what you need to recuse yourself on because of proximity to your home. So we should be good if everybody is in agreement with that.
Works for me. Thank you for the timing. This is great. I appreciate it. Okay.
Bye, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Enjoy your Saturday.
Take care, Adam.
All right, Amy, it's, the floor is yours.
I promise I won't keep you guys an hour. So just going through a few of our projects for this next fiscal year that do happen to be at the Burton Park site. So the first is a previously approved and funded project. It is phase two of our field lighting project. As some of you may recall, in 2018, we completed an environmental impact report study that looked at the replacement of existing field lights at Madsen Field and the lower synthetic field at Highlands Park, and then also new field lights at Flanagan Field, which is the east side of the Burton Field, and Stadium Field, which is the upper natural grass field at Highlands Park. So proposed for fiscal year '21, '22 would be funding for design in the amount of $200,000 and funding in the following fiscal year '22, '23 would be $1.4 million for the installation of those lights. Next slide. And then our new project requests are, first, the upgrade of existing tennis and basketball court lighting to LED lighting and the replacement of scoreboards at Burton Park. Next. So the upgrade of existing tennis and basketball court lighting, the request for fiscal year '21, '22 is $50,000. This will be for the design to assess if we can reuse the existing poles, if we need to replace those as well in the project. And it will be for the tennis and basketball courts at Burton Park and then also the tennis courts at Highlands Park. And then construction for this in fiscal year '22, '23 in the amount of $300,000. Next slide. And then lastly, the scoreboards at Burton Park. The request is for $65,000. We base this budget off of some recent projects that have been completed in neighboring cities for scoreboards. This would include the demo of existing, the purchase of the new, techs, freight, insulation, everything. We have been in discussions with our Parks and Recreation Foundation as well as Little League and girls softball. All organizations are on board to help fund this project. We've held a meeting in the last week or two to discuss a possible HIT-athon event to raise funds as well as looking at potentially some local corporate sponsors for these scoreboards, which the foundation would help facilitate. So looking at hopefully a minimal cost of the general fund when all said and done. I believe that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions on these projects.
Thank you. Questions from council. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Amy. These, these are great projects. You know, I just, I think everything you talked about involves LED lights, whether it be the scoreboard or elsewhere. And just make the observation, you know, there's a, in theory, anyway, they last 20, 25 years. So it's always worth being a little careful on the selection. And I, just a question, do we have a standard, you know, Kelvin temperature that we have selected for LED lights throughout the city? You know, I know, you know, it can range from like 3,000, which is nice and warm and I like personally, up to like 5,000, which is blue and garish. And I think some of our early streetlights were more in that flavor. And I just, especially as we're thinking about lighting all our parks for the next 25 years, do we have a standard for that? Is there some, is that, you know, that has to be a high design consideration, I would think.
Right, we don't have a standard that we've identified. And I would have to go back and see what was installed when we replaced the existing lights at Madsen Field and the lower synthetic field. And I know that topic came up, and I just don't have that figure. I can get that to you.
Okay, I, you know, yeah, if you could get back to me on that, I would just like to understand that. And I, you know, I would think we would want to kind of standardize as a city and just kind of all our lights are the same because it's a, it's a really big difference, you know, when, when they jump around. And then kind of similar on the scoreboards. Is it, is it just kind of like a big LCD screen? And then whatever sport you're playing, you can kind of configure it as you like? Or is it like optimized for two or three sports and that's it? Just, do you, do we know what those are going to be like?
Would be for the primary use of softball and baseball. So not so customizable, maybe to include soccer or other sports. Right now, they're just not functional. And this would just create multi-use between all organizations to be able to utilize them, improve energy efficiency with new lighting technology. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, I think they can be pretty open, open format now.
Yeah, we'll look at.
We might want to look at that because again, it's like, hopefully, a 25-year decision we're making. So to the extent we don't have to lock into one or two sports with those things, I just think will better serve the community.
Yeah, definitely something that we'll look into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amy, thank you for your presentation. I have a quick question for you about the lighting that has been upgraded at Burton and Highlands Parks. Have we received any feedback from the neighbors, any complaints about the brightness of the new lights?
No, we had to mitigate one issue at Highlands Park when we, when the project was completed. One of the fixtures was shining into someone's home on the upper side. I'm blanking on the street right now. And so with a few modifications and adjustments to the degree of the fixture, we were able to mitigate that. So after we worked with that one neighbor, we've heard nothing but positive comments about the new lights.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Okay, so, Crystal, it looks like we don't have any additional questions from council. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment on this item?
Let me take a look. Looks like we do have one hand. Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. I'm excited about seeing all those upgrades and thank you for your efforts on that. I wanted to just put in a quick plug as you talk to the Parks Foundation, et cetera, or into getting grants from the community. One thing that would really promote a multimodal network throughout our town is bike pump stations, repair stations that can be in some of our parks to help encourage people to air up their tires and make it convenient to get around town without having to congest more of the streets and parking. And then one other thing I just need to add because I went on too long about buses in the other comment and didn't get to it is just when a downtown is regarding the, just to consider with the downtown changes, one-way streets as a potential way to make sure that we keep street parking and make space for bike lanes, wider sidewalks that work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, anybody else wishing to make comment?
No, there are no other hands.
All right, so at this time, let's move to council discussion and any additional comments? Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, all I'd like to say is that this has probably been one of the smoothest budget meetings that I've ever sat through. Staff just gets better and better every time. It's more and more organized. Maybe it just seems more organized because they've, they've been doing this for so long. So I just want to thank everybody and congratulate you. You really put it in a format that is, it's easy to read, it's easy to go through, it's easy to prepare for. And from my, you know, lack of economic training background, it's very much appreciated. So thank you again. It's, I think it's just been a terrific session. I look forward to getting, trying to get back to normal as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. All right, so I would just echo Councilmember Collins' comments. I recognize that the department has received rewards annually for their process, process and approach taken, and it's very much appreciated. I am enthusiastic about the lighting projects that are underway. And just to, you know, to build on Councilmember Dugan's comments, I want to just point out that red and orange hues work best for my complexion. So if you could take that into consideration, that would be appreciated. And with respect to the scoreboard, I like, I love the idea of trying to identify corporate sponsors. I think that's a great way of building community. And hopefully, if those could be local businesses, that would be even better because we love our retail and merchants and we love to shop local and dine locally. So with that, if there are no additional comments from council, I think we can adjourn.
Thank you all. Just before we do, I'd just like to give a special thank you to Rebecca and her staff as well as all the department heads and division heads and their staff who are here. They've spent a great deal of time and effort on this, really, you know, really appreciate your thoughts and comments for us. That was very nice. They've really embraced the council's goals and objectives and strategic plan and have really worked hard to begin to turn those into a reality for our community. And we look forward to doing and accomplishing the great work that's planned for in this budget. So thank you and have a great weekend, everybody.
Wonderful.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Take care, everyone.